Ready? Let's call this meeting to order. Begin with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the meeting, the January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. Pat will call.
Leary, Aaron.
Here.
Semansky.
Here.
Caparros.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
In your package you had minutes of the December tenth meeting. Any additions or corrections? If none, emotions in order approved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Discussion, questions? None, we'll call.
Aaron.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Caparros.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
Okay, clerk's report.
All board members have a copy of the clerk's report. The total tax income received since the last meeting, one hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And because the way the meeting dates felt, a lot of those are duplicate payments. And we also received our first video gaming tax proceeds for the Yam bets. And so that's a nice number, it's going up slowly. Also attached is a copy of resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh-one that we just signed internally. It's a resolution acknowledging the Chicago Southland Convention and Visitors Bureau as our convention and visitors bureau of record for the year standard that we do this every year. And I just wanted to have it entered into the minutes, the resolution number. Also attached is a copy of the certification of ballot for the April ninth, twenty thirteen election, citing forth the names of all the candidates and how they will appear, the order that will appear on the ballot. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions at the clerk? If none, we'll go to recognition of audience. Anyone wish to address the board? Mariah, state your name, address, and concern.
I'm Joe Blotman, four seventeen Woodbury Bend, Hunter Chase.
My name is Michael Rebus, sixteen fifty-eight Woodbury Bend, Hunter Chase. And we're both here to speak in conjunction or together regarding the HOA.
Any concerns?
Sure.
First off, thank you this evening for allowing me to speak. I appreciate your time and attention. My name is Michael Rebus, I'm a resident of Hunter Chase. About ten years, or I'm sorry, about ten years ago, I married my wife and we had a family. And I was grew up in an army brat, so we were looking for a place that had a very home-like style, family place to raise our kids. Somewhere you can let the kids out in the neighborhood and not have to worry about something bad happening. We found that place in Beecher. And we're very grateful that Beecher has been a wonderful community to us. One of the things that we're aware of when we moved into Beecher is that we would be part of an HOA. And at a certain point, the HOA would be turned over to the residents and we would be given the responsibility to have to care for our common areas and the public areas. Currently, we've been trying to do that over the last three years with Mr. Felipe. Unfortunately, we have been unsuccessful. Mr. Felipe has continued to hold the HOA from being turned over unless we agree to his terms. And his terms are, we must provide insurance and care for the two ponds and monuments on his private property, private commercial property outside Hunter Chase. He says that, and this is often handed out to you, he put up a couple monuments there without building permits and claims that in ordinance nine seventy-four, that we're responsible for all monuments and ponds. What we've stated is, in the same paragraph that he cites, it says, "One monument will be placed west of and adjoining Lot Three." And he has failed to put a monument in that location. And if you see on the map, it's rather hard to tell here, but, all right, you got north, here's where the adjoining Lot Three line is, here's where he's placed two monuments and what he's asking us to take care of. This year, after our last meeting with him in December, he has made it clear to us that unless we agree to these terms, he is going to raise our annual HOA dues to the point in his term was, "It hurts." So now we're stuck with two alternative positions. One, we either take over the HOA and pay an increase in dues to cover health or liability insurance and care for his ponds and monuments, or we choose to do nothing and not take it over under those terms, and then he's going to increase our dues. Either way, we feel that he is holding our HOA ransom and is preventing us from taking our responsibility as homeowners, as owners of the homeowners association. We ask that Village Beecher Board, please come to our support. Unfortunately, because he does control the HOA and he is the builder, he has us at a very great disadvantage. We really don't have any leverage to stand on. If the Board could come to our assistance and write a letter to Mr. Felipe indicating that you are in support of the HOA being turned over to the residents of Hunter Chase West in compliance with the ordinance, the declarations, the covenants, and the bylaws, we would greatly appreciate it. You'll also find one of the handouts is the declaration where it clearly states that the PUD and common area, or the PUD and common area is lots one through fifty-eight, sorry about that, lots one through fifty-eight. It explicitly excludes fifty-nine and sixty, and then also makes us responsible for Lot sixty-one. We are all mature adults, we realize what we signed and agreed to, and we'd like to adhere to that.
That's good.
At this point, I yield the rest of my time.
We have our attorney, you want to address their concerns?
We've met with some of the homeowners before, a couple months back. The problem with this matter is that it's a private matter, not a village matter. As much as it would be nice to have a letter from the Board saying, "Support homeowners association," it turns out they don't need that when we apply. As we discussed, they have legal rights, and as homeowners strongly recommend that we turn it over to, and address their issues with, you know, the developer, and can handle those issues. But from a village standpoint, there's not a lot that we can do. And like we said, the natter that before suggests they do that at this point where they don't have a legal, legally speaking, but there's nothing else to do on that. All of the homeowners associations are creating the same way, their private restrictions on the land. And you know, he's exactly right, they were recorded, they applied to one through fifty-eight, not fifty-nine and sixty. Their monuments are located on the adjoining lot. The ordinance requires maintenance by them, you know, ordinance, but then the declaration doesn't cover. And they're fully, we're actually, according to attorney was, but the fact remains that that's the way it exists. So I don't know about that.
When is he supposed to turn this over to the residents? I mean, is there a special number?
It's supposed to be after five years of first unit being built, or with, after seventy-five percent of the units have been built. We've long surpassed that timeframe.
Okay, so we're past seventy-five percent, we're past five years.
Almost triggered that to have been met, to have the turnover, but again, it's not something that the village is involved in.
Can we write a letter of support?
You can, but...
I mean, we write letters of support for expressways, letters of support in our opposition for airports. Can we?
You absolutely can, it just has no legal binding.
Legal binding, but it could show this developer that the village board is hearing what they're saying. We've seen what they're saying in the declarations, we've seen it in our own ordinance.
Absolutely.
We have, we were out there measuring the other day, and actually, in my mind, basically, it's two things. The monument is on his property, the ponds are on his property. And if I understand it correctly, an HOA cannot maintain something that's not common, is that correct, or can they?
They can, but it goes back to the document that's recorded.
Okay.
The ordinance anticipated that the monuments would be on our, that's not owned, and that's why I said adjoining lot. So that was contemplated, applied. As long as it's set forth clearly, the documental responsibilities are, then that would be an appropriate maintenance responsibility. I'm not saying that the document is wrong, but it could be.
Well, the point I was going to make is, when we were out there, and trustee Capores happened to come by, village manager was there, the mayor was there, when we were out there, he happened to come by. And basically, what I just said, both of us, or all of us, reiterated that while we're out there. So if we already said it, and I guess I'm agreeing with trustee Capores, is why couldn't we just simply say, "Hey, this monument is on private property, as far as we're concerned, it's not common property, it's not, in my mind, it's not normal what an HOA is there for to maintain any other property but common property," and just simply write a letter to that effect?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As I suggested, I suggested in the other meeting, that until such time that there's something changes, the only ones two lots, fifty-nine and sixty, are responsible for the monuments and the pond.
Right.
Not necessarily the HOA.
Right, yeah. I know, believe me, I know that in their mind, this is a complex issue, but in my mind, it's not. It's on his property, he should maintain them until something else says otherwise. And if there is something that says otherwise and it's being disputed, that's up for the courts to decide. But at this particular point in time, it's on his property, HOAs don't commonly maintain personal property, they maintain common property.
The only thing is, that's a grainy jism, and their development does go into those two ponds.
Correct.
And that does have some effect on them as homeowners, so...
I didn't think our, our waters went into those...
What, state your name, name, we got for the record.
I was showing on the maps, our water does not go into those two ponds whatsoever. And that's private property, and our water goes into the pond, but we already agreed to it, Lot sixty-one. And those monuments, that's real legally built.
Right, I understand what you're saying, man, that may be a possibility, we're not here to argue which way the current flows. But your ordinance does say that if prior to a monument being erected, it won't be approved by the village. And to my understanding, there was never a building permit for these monuments, nor was it approved by the village.
We don't.
So it sounds like Mr. Felipe may have gone outside of the ordinance to put these monuments up. Now, whether he did it on the private property here in Beecher, or the private property that he has in Crete, or Stager, or St. John's, that's not our responsibility. What he does with his private property is his private property. The ordinance says that he does owe us a monument to the west of and adjoining Lot Three, and we have failed to have that monument erected. All right, now, does the village have power to enforce its own ordinance?
First of all, he wasn't required to put up a monument. And any of our developments, developer comes in, they decide whether they want to put up a monument. No permits ever issued for any of the monuments for a development.
I would call your attention respectfully, Mr. Mayor, to the ordinance nine seventy-four, number six, where it says, "A subdivision monument signed to be approved in advance by the village shall be erected by the developer." Is that still now an optional?
But there was no permit required.
Okay, but that permit, but that specific monument in that location is bound to be There is no monument west of Lot Three adjoining it?
Well, I think, in a way there is, but it's not where it was on the maps, I go along with that. What he's got on your prints there is not where he put it.
You're right. It also says, "On private property, homeowners association shall be solely responsible for potential maintenance of monuments signed in all common areas." And the problem is, this finding signs not common, but it says, "The situation maintains the sign."
Permission to speak, Denise Rebus, sixteen fifty-eight Woodbury Bend. In our declarations, in our covenants, and in our bylaws, it states very specifically that no monies whatsoever obtained through our non-for-profit homeowners association can pay for, maintain, repair, erect, build, or go for anything that is not on residential property or property that has already been deemed as part of the declaration and covenants as common property. That's it.
What would you guys like? What are you guys asking for? I mean, we could argue about what happened. What solution are you guys seeking to start with that?
I got a question. We don't ever require permits for something like that, that monument sign.
No.
We're not concerned about the, wait a minute, this is a stone wall monument, we're not concerned about the footings or anything. We had a trustee up here that was concerned about footings underneath a small landscape column for a fence in a yard. We have no concern about footings underneath monument signs or anything like that, we wouldn't require a permit?
We didn't for Prairie Crossings, we didn't for...
Antupico.
Antupico, we didn't for the other development there.
Never had permit for monuments.
Never had permits for monuments.
Mr. Barber, answer your question. We would like for the village to come out in strong support of the residents. I mean, we've elected you officials to represent us.
Okay, what is, what would you like? Tell us what you want. Do you want him to deed these monument sign properties to you? Do you want him to remove the monuments?
No.
Do you want him to...
What he does with his privately-owned monuments on his private commercial property is of his affair. What we would like is for the HOA to return over to us.
With Lot sixty-one.
With Lot sixty-one, and agree...
And whatever he does in fifty-nine and sixty, it's...
That's, I hate to tell them how to run his commercial property. I just, we just want the HOA to accord to the ordinance the declaration.
And he won't agree to that?
He will not agree to it.
Okay.
He's made it very clear, once again, that he is, as a matter of fact, we said, "Okay, well, we're here to discuss and reach a compromise." And he said, "No, I'm just going to tell you what you're going to do. You're going to provide insurance, you're going to care for it." All right, and I have all this recorded, right? I mean, I, you know, if you want to hear it, I'll bring it out.
No, I don't want to hear it.
Yeah, but you've got it, Mr. Felipe, I'm sure, right? He says, "You're going to do this," all right, and I asked, "Well, what will you give us in exchange for us providing these services?" And he said, "Nothing. But if you don't, we're going to increase your annual dues to the extent where it hurts." Right? And I just don't understand how village officials can stand by and let us be extorted and abused and have our HOA home rendered.
I got a question for Jeanette. Would we need for that to be on the agenda to call for a vote for a letter of support for the HOA?
I'll take a little minute. Or just do consensus?
All right, I'll make the motion.
I don't think, you can't do a motion, you just do consensus and...
Right.
So we have to ask for consensus of the board?
Yeah. Once you make the motion, you're doing the action.
Tim, what, at what time and point is that, they've met the build-out and everything else. Legally, what time does that HOA get turned over? I mean, he's hol, he is holding him hostage, I understand.
By the document.
But there's a, huh?
By the document.
And that was five years or seventy-five percent?
It should have been turned over already.
And what legal course do they have to get it turned over? Do they have any?
Unfortunately, be court. That'd be about, unless they could get something out in the head time, but it's going to be court. When you get those things worked out, and that's why it's supposed to be court, they have to get attorney involved, force the turnover, and so that they can keep going to do the things that they need to do pursuant to their causes. Lot sixty-one has already been deeded over to the HOA.
Right, right, okay.
Is it all possible that we just start acting as the HOA and just take it over by action? Our procedures become...
That's all I can opine about at this point, as I suggested before, Felipe's operating it, they're running it, they're collecting it. You guys might really have to deal with, maybe one way or another, whether it's work something out or you're in court, and it sounds like we're going towards the ladder at this point.
If we were to go to court, it would be wonderful to have a letter from the village in our support.
And are you, are you aiming in that direction? Do you have an attorney?
We have an attorney picked out.
Okay.
She's taken the village of Stager and Felipe to court and been successful. She's agreed to cut her rates in half on our behalf. So we do have somebody in mind.
Me personally, if that's the course you're going to go, I would, I don't have any trouble with a letter, but that's me. I don't know why I can't speak for the other five.
Just be forewarned that if we send this letter, say, "Turnover sixty-one, fifty-nine, sixty here," he has the option to pull the monument down. And if that's...
Well, that's fine, it's his property.
No, it's fine. With ordinance, with ordinance nine seventy-four, can we then make him put one in where it says, adjacent to Lot Three?
Just let it go for this long, I don't know, you can say you got it. Then you have to deed the property to them anyway, because there is nothing on fifty-nine that's common.
Do you care if there's a monument sign there?
We don't have a preference one way or the other.
And just the brief discussion I heard the other day when we were out there, he said, "If they don't want them, I'll tear them down." Fine.
That's what he says to you, Mayor.
Well, that's fine, well, I mean, that's what he said, so...
If you wouldn't mind putting that in your letter, that the residents of the HOA do not want the monuments.
But did anybody else hear that?
Yeah, the other problem could happen is they would be not maintained. There's trees and trucks that are going to have them, it would look unsightly.
Then can we find them for that?
Yeah, there's, there's no fine for untrimmed bushes, there's fines for weaks. For an untrimmed bush, we typically don't have a ordinance in that.
Eventually, there's going to be commercial buildings that are going to...
And my suggestion is, if you can sneak on, Saturday morning, sneak out of the private property, push quick, then it's fine, it only takes one's employees here. Because I guarantee he's not going to be in trouble or shit. That was what we was doing.
And once again, Mr. Barber, what he does with his private property is not my concern.
That's right, I agree, I mean, but if you, if you want to get this thing turned over, which it sounds like you do, like I said, I think the village would give you a letter of support, but yeah, it's going to take, go into court, is that correct, Tim?
That's where, unfortunately, I've heard, it sounds like they're going under cattle.
Unfortunately, no.
One more thing, you're talking about maintenance of the property. Since it's his property, way back when, two years ago, a letter should have went reiterating that it's his property and he's supposed to maintain it according to our ordinance, but I, from what I understand, it was taken care of, it was taken care of verbal, so the letter may have never went out. Can we include that in this prop, in this letter as well?
He is apparently paying the landscaping company to maintain that, and probably charging usually.
They're paying it regardless, I understand that.
And they want that to cease, they just want to take care of sixty-one.
Right, I understand that.
But I, I also, even though they're saying that they don't care, in other words, basically, what happens, what he does with his property, if that property begins to look like hell, it does become our problem, which we have to deal with, which is our village ordinance. That's what I'm asking, if we can reiterate that, saying, "Hey, just don't think you can let this property go," because that's what we reiterated back in 2010. He's got to maintain his own property, which that's all they're asking for, their, his property, let him maintain.
He can put that in.
Okay.
The only problem is, I don't have an exact ordinance for untrimmed woods.
But code enforcement, they ain't answering.
We're talking about the mowing of the lots, we're talking about the care of the pond and everything else. That's, that's what we want to assure as a village, that that still gets maintained and that Mr. Felipe understands that that is his responsibility, that we're not going to go after the HOA, we're not going to ask the HOA to take care of this.
I think he's pretty clear on that.
Mr. Attorney, would you suggest maybe that's the way they go? Get their attorney and, and go to court?
That's what I suggested before, that's the only way to do it, resolve the sentence.
Okay.
Agree to something else that we're not talented for.
No, not, that, that's not the course you want to go, but unfortunately, that's the way it is.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, unfortunately.
We do have the consensus of the board to write this letter of support.
I think so.
Absolutely.
I heard that. I might have my directions.
Yeah, you have the consensus.
Well, once again, thank you for your time.
Let us know when you want the letter, we can have our attorney draft it and address your issues.
Can I ask who of the board members are agreeing to write the letter for us? If I might ask.
All of them, except Gail, she has to have a say.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Arnie?
Yes.
Name, address.
Arnie Van Merren, with Dutch American Foods, one three six two Dutch American Way. I'll try to be quick. We are, we are businesses of our own, and we're at the point where we want to put a sugar silo in the front of our building so that we can be more efficient in how we buy sugar. We use about 1.4 million pounds a month. And there's pros to it. We can get the sugar delivered after hours, in the evening hours, so there'll be some less traffic during the day, it's one of the things we have a lot of trucks, and that's really one of the main concerns of. We talked to some of the neighbors, and all of them are okay, except one of them is a little concerning. Says it's, well, it's kind of an eyesore. So I can talk to him further, and we've asked him to talk to us about that. He was going to call, instead he sent a letter to you folks instead. But anyway, we addressed it today, I spoke with Mr. Wise-Gerber about what we can do with the truck situation, so you guys are going to talk more about that. But primarily, I guess what we're going to ask for is, I think it's called an I-1 zoning variance. The silo's fifty feet tall, approximately, give or take a few feet. I think it's forty feet or forty-two feet, what you're allowed to put up, so we're going to ask for a variance on that part of it. And I think you have to present that to the zoning committee, or, so officially here to ask for that. There are a few pictures, if you want to pass them around.
I think it would be...
Just an idea, it would be free.
I kind of got it, I already got the...
That's kind of what it would look like, right there.
Only one, one silo.
Only one silo, yeah.
And you, I think in your dad's presentation, he said he put the flag or something on it.
We're going to put our nice company logo on the front of it, it'll be painted white. It's approximately twelve feet round and fifty feet high, there's some nice railings around the top so you can be safe up there. It would be probably four or five months before we could even put the thing up, if we were to do it, and all that, but, so, I think we have to be set back forty feet from the street, it'd be well within that, as close to the building as possible, approximately three to five feet away. There are some other businesses in town we know that have silos, as they call them. The one by us is thirty-seven feet tall. I know Beecher's got a hundred foot tall by the sewage plant. But this is not an ugly thing, but, you know, when somebody first hears something in life, the first time you hear something seems like a disaster, maybe it isn't so bad as what you think. So anyhow, we're going to talk with him more personally, but I think he could be warmed up too.
Did you get a chance to go over there this afternoon?
I did go there today, he wasn't there.
Okay.
Told his secretary to call me, he wasn't able to call me back, but I told him, "We're coming here tonight to apply for this." So, you know, when we first talked to him, he was fine, and then maybe, you know, if he had a bad day or wasn't.
The trucks, I think, are more of a concern.
I think that's what his more concern is, and we're going to, we've addressed that.
We've addressed that.
That's going to be better. And we knew that was too, we didn't imagine the growth we were going to have. I don't think the town knew the growth we were going to have either.
Well, sure did.
So it's a good thing for the town, and we want to try to do, and work with you guys too, so it's amicable for everybody. So I think we'll be okay, but that's what I have to say, I don't know if anybody has questions or...
I have a question.
Comments? Anybody?
I have one.
Yeah, yeah.
In comparison to where your building is now, where you first come in is your offices.
Right.
Where is this located?
Okay, you go past the first set of docks, there's, there'll be a maintenance entrance there, it'll be just to the north of the maintenance entrance there. We have the second set of docks, there's a ground level dock door, the first dock door, just past the maintenance, that's where the truck can just back, right there, and then you just basically take a hose that'll connect to the silo, and it goes into a little transfer pump that just blows it up there. So it's directly across the street, pretty much, from Goldie's Auto, kind, pretty much in the center of our plant. The reason we want it there is for internal, if I have it all the way in the other end, when I need sugar at the other end of the plant, it's a sixth of a mile long, like forklifts, I got to go, you know, it's just, doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's why we want it there in the center. And again, like I said, it's going to be advantageous for keeping a few less semis during the day. We can take these deliveries at, in the evening, they'll blow it in. Most, a lot of truck companies, they don't want to come in the evening, but when they're, these pneumatic guys will do whatever time they want. So that'll be kind of nice.
It's after eight o'clock, is that, that we are?
Anytime. They'll come at one in the morning if they want. You know, we can arrange an appointment for that.
How much of this will be dispersed in the air?
It's all going to be blown right into the silo.
Will it be contained?
Yeah, it's all contained, yeah. It's all food grade, it's clean. It's a double-walled tank, so there won't, the rust, and then putting an humidifier inside the thing to keep the sugar dry and free blowing.
That is stainless too, isn't it?
Yeah.
I would think so, yeah. Have to be.
Yeah. And the outside will be a carbon steel, but that's painted real nice with a good white epoxy on it.
Now, Art, Art, when you passed out most of grade, with the tank of yours is going to be on eight foot, four foot, ten foot, so it'll be eight foot.
It has to be, the bottom of it has to be eight feet in the air, simply for offloading purposes, because there'll be a vibrating thing that's underneath that vibrates, and you have to have it eight feet in the air. There'll be a concrete, just a square pad before, it'll be at grade, okay? Um, and that's where, the thing of it is, it's, it's about fifty feet in the air, sort of, with the railings.
What your dad said is there's indentation in the building there, so it's actually behind the most front part of the building?
Well, that's if you're on the north end of the, the building.
It's behind?
Because that building is actually dug into the ground, you know, that's how we did. We poured a big footy. So this structure will just sit kind of basically at grade in front of the, front of the shop.
It won't exceed his front building line, the way I looked at it the other day.
No, it won't. It's going to be tucked up real close to the wall, maybe three feet away, just so you can get behind it.
Can you pick out the pad for us? Just before?
Well, we could, yeah, yeah.
That way, when people drive by, they'll look, they'll get an idea of where it's.
Yeah, I'll put some stakes in with some flags or something. Yeah. So it'd be really advantageous for us. We can save some money on our sugar. We can keep our customers happy. We'll pass some of the savings on to them. Um, the tank itself is maybe a hundred thousand dollar tank, you know. Internally, we have to buy a bunch of delugering equipment and whatever, but that's.
Wiring and everything.
Yeah, basic outside structure. When we get a permit in that, about a hundred thousand dollars available, so.
So what you're asking for is referral to the planning commission, is that correct? Right for a variance?
For a variance on the height.
Okay.
And before you vote on that, I talked to Art. Schedule for that is workshop, fourth Thursday in February.
Taking it before.
The hearing will be the fourth Thursday in March. It'll be back for you for speed.
We really can't vote on it, but we can get consensus.
No, you just refer.
Yeah. If the board so desires.
Refer him to the planning commission.
Mr. Coleman? John?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's.
Did the mayor quickly copy the picture, trusty, and do you want to see?
I think you're going to get some more.
Am I?
Well, I thought he said that he was going to, like we talked about, one silo and show it on his building, other can, what the silo?
Like a rendering? Is he going to do a rendering of that?
I thought, didn't he say that?
I would like to see one.
That's what we would like to have. I think the planning commission would like to see that.
Like a mock-up picture?
Yes, yes. With the picture of the tank and everything else.
Whatever company you're buying this from?
Yeah, they can do it.
Yeah, but I went online and, and looked at some of their, you know, if you could do something like that.
That might have been from that company, that's one that they probably did right there.
Yeah.
You have to visualize, so it's not peeing there, but it's kind of relative to the height, how it sticks up a little bit above the building.
The one that they had a line that was V-shaped on the bottom were, you know, yeah, so.
And picture is worth a thousand words.
Yeah, it is.
And once they see the picture, you'll cut your ear in half.
Yeah.
Because you'll ask all sorts of questions about what is this store like?
That's all right. That's what you want.
It saves a lot of aggravation now, now, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I guess.
And the other issue between the chief and, and you and the person that's complaining, maybe we can get something locked down, so.
That's going to be, yeah, we want to, and you had brought it up before in the past, and it was kind of, well, let's see what happens. We put the new docks in, and, and as he said, it's gotten better. It has gotten better. But there are times where, see, the problem is some of these over-road guys come from a long ways away. They have a one o'clock appointment, but they get there at ten in the morning. They got to go somewhere for three hours. So, um.
There's different ways we're going to tackle it.
There's different ways that we've approached it and tried to tackle it, and it's going to make it better, so.
Very good. You're all set.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, guys. Thanks for having your day. All right. Have a good night.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, if not, we'll go to our commissions. Uh, just quickly report on the beautification. Uh, the house walk was a success this past year. I think we drove something over four thousand dollars. I think we netted thirty-two, thirty-two hundred, something like that. The baskets, the hanging baskets for route one have been sent out, and hopefully they'll arrive in, in May, early May, so hopefully they'll be all set. Other than that, we don't have anything, Fourth of July. Want to say anything about the fair price?
Yeah, the bid specs have been approved and will be, uh, notifying several dealers as to the type of vehicle that we're looking for, uh, short.
Um. Okay, this thing, you're in California.
What's up to you? Is that on the Fourth of July?
That's it.
Okay, Hailers?
Hailers, we have not had our next meeting. Uh, it's the same, same report. We're, we're planning on meeting, I think, the first Thursday of February. So that's, I'll have a report in February.
You?
Uh, we got open bowling this Monday when the kids are off for Martin Luther King Day. Um, and we're still just working on the, we got February sixteenth Daddy Daughter Dance, March ninth Mom-Son Dance. That's about it.
Okay, with that.
I have one question.
Yeah.
It was about Hailers meeting, is that the first Thursday in February? Is that the next meeting we're going to have? I remember in August we scheduled it. Was it? That's not right?
I think it was February.
Yeah, huh?
I think it was February.
I think it was February, yeah.
We were going to get.
I wouldn't have left.
I think it was February.
It was first Thursday, but then we had a problem with the Lions.
Did we go Wednesday, then? Did we change it to Wednesday?
We need to look at it.
Yeah.
Next day we're meeting. Coming soon. Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. Finance?
Uh, Nelson's here to give the treasury report. I'm sorry. I was just checking my schedule for that Hailers meeting. I saw it today, but I thought it's another.
That would be until Wednesday.
The last one you had was on a Wednesday, I believe.
Well, we moved it because we have several Hailers people that are in the Lions book, and they have beaten seven, and we moved. Sorry.
Hey, you got the treasurer's report. Uh, we're still maintaining pretty well compared to last year. You've done a good job with the finances. The ones that have fair enough changes, the general account from last month, that payroll, hospital insurance, uh, payroll taxes and so forth. Uh, the bond redemption, if you notice that, that got taken down to just over a thousand dollars. That was a loan payment that we made, about forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. You go into the commission accounts, the, as the mayor pointed out, the beautification account is up substantially from last month, and that's from the house walk receipts. And the youth commission is also up a fair amount, and that's from sponsors, the fees that are coming in for this year. Do you have any questions about this portion of the treasurer's report? And the next section has to do with the commission bills. And we've got those all categorized, one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventeen eighty-eight, are the checks that I've written during December. Any questions about any of those bills? Thank you very much.
President, there needs to be a motion approving the treasurer's report for financial activities.
They have a motion on the treasurer's report? So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Approving the treasurer's report. Any discussion? None, roll call.
Whaley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
The variance?
Yes.
The variance report for the month of November, closed for your review. This is the six-month point in time in our fiscal year. Uh, we have a list of bills that were provided to you tonight. Hope for attention to those in the bold and italic, before the new bills are added. Since you received them, it will be an email on Friday. And there's some substantial ones, I'm not sure you understand them. Uh, we got some bills for the Aquamac, uh, before we, I'm going to go easy on the old. Constellation Energy, we have two months of street lighting to pay for. Uh, we didn't pay for November's, and we got December's bill, and we're going to pay for two months there. Uh, I-DOT, lo and behold, we got the bill for Chestnut, Dixie Traffic Lighting. And we're going to pay the bill and get it off the books, because we've been carrying that due to an encumbered thing for idols since two thousand and ten. So that bill came in, it came in at about a thousand dollars less than what we budgeted. And then we have the main western, if I can find it here, it's the second one from the top on page six. That is the complete cost of the new Franklin pump and motor install wired calibrated test. Buddy was happy to report that as of Thursday, but the well and pump are online and part of our system was against. Is that correct?
It was Friday.
Friday. Those, Mr. President, are, the bills added since Friday's list of bills came out. Total bills were a hundred eighty-five thousand, where? Two hundred, a hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and eleven cents, and there are several big bills in there this time. Actual operation bills were about sixty thousand.
They were good until the last couple days, so with that, we need a motion to approve the bills as presented.
So move.
Second. A motion is second to approve the bills as presented. Uh, discussion? None, roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, the next item of business for finance committee is the five-year financial plan. That plan was distributed and discussed in December. This is clearly a planning document. Uh, there, there's no appropriation authority or budgeting authority that goes with the plan, but the plan is instrumental in us preparing our budget for the coming year. Um, with that, staffs ready to have the board approve the five-year financial plan.
Two?
Two thousand thirteen oh two. So desired, we need a motion to approve. Resolution number two thousand thirteen dash two. This is the five-year financial plan as presented.
So move.
Second. Got a motion is second. Any discussion on the five-year financial plan? If none, roll call.
Whaley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
The variance?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, next item, Mr. President, is the revised personnel manual. It's been three years since we've updated the manual last time. A lot of the changes to the personnel manual are minor, uh, word changes, word smoothing or have you. Uh, there's no substantial changes at all that will cause the village anything or affect the employees' performance of the village. These are basically changes that we update time to time. There are some major changes that we've already approved that we're now incorporating in the manual, which has a social security number resolution we adopted a couple of years ago. It's now being incorporated into the calendar. With that, staffs prepared to have the board act on the revised personnel manual.
Okay, this would be resolution two thousand thirteen dash three. This is adopting the revised personnel manual. Need a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the personnel manual? If none, roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Mr. President, the budget is, process is in full swing. Uh, the department heads will be suiting their budgets here in the coming week. Uh, revenues are already forecasted, and we're putting together a budget, and I hope they have one in your hands when they're clear to be, we're getting that close. Um, we have some fluctuations that are occurring if we approve the price for fuel tonight, we put that number in budget. Uh, we're still waiting for final health insurance numbers to come in. Uh, we're getting the numbers pretty tight, so we are on schedule with the budget. Title six was completed by the village attorney, still here now. On Thursday, I hastily put a cover memo on it and throw it on your laps to read, and you got a whole month to read. I spent the weekend while watching football games, uh, this weekend, reading Tim's beautiful piece of work. And I want you to focus on three things. Uh, the solicitation ordinance has drastically changed. The open burning portion of the code has drastically changed to accommodate and define where a recreation fire pit is. If you recall, over the last ten years, we've had a lot of discussions on fire pits. They've never been addressing our ordinance before. We are addressing them now, and we are able to allow them. If they generate complaints, the police department has latitude to go over there and abate the complaint if there's. But we have to face the fact that recreation fire pits are here to stay, we have to address them. Everybody's got it. Everybody's using it. And right now, I don't believe, Chief, we have a code to deal with the fire pit. Or.
Not specifically.
Right. And this one does. I'm going to ask the chief to read it, because this is the police section of the code book. The chief sat in with us when we did co-review. He's reviewer of the work, and I have to, and Jeanette asked you from the solicitation book, but she enforces the solicitation. I think it's a good ordinance, Tim. I think your, your attempt at veracity and a lot of the language, you chopped a lot of the language out of the code just for, I'll let you explain.
It was thirty-seven pages of fun when I finally got done. We just tried to simplify a lot of the things that we really used, and it's complicated, definitions, definitions that we read, there's just a lot of different things, especially on solicitation part, the First Amendment issues, perhaps not in the appropriate way, so you can still stop commercial solicitation, but allowing for First Amendment, and just things like that. So it took a while, but hopefully we end up, you know, it should be.
For example, we, we, our co-review committee recommended that we remove newspaper sales from the solicitation ordinance. Tim and Serech found out that newspapers have a First Amendment right to give out their newspapers, because they have a First Amendment right to solicit door-to-door to sell subscriptions. So we can, that is a regular, regular of the law. We can choose regularly. Because we do want to know who's coming to people's doors. That is the most important part of solicitation ordinance. Do they have a criminal history? You know, do they have history of fraud? Those kinds of things, we want to ensure residents are protected from solicitation. Those kinds of things, we want to ensure residents are protected from solicitation. The other thing that needs to be discussed, and something you don't have to decide tonight, but you have to think very seriously, is that the police, the chief of police, with the concurrence of the co-review committee, is recommending to the board that that position be allowed to employ hard-time police officers. So up to twelve years, the police chief knows it. Right now, he does it with the consent of the board. We need to give that some thought, okay? We can argue both ways. First of all, will we consent to the hiring of a hard-timer? We're giving the chief our consent without very little knowledge of the candidate to begin with. But do you want a process where the board is involved in the selection of that candidate or the appointment of that candidate? It has a lot to do with the person you have in a position of chief of police. There's a lot of problems that hard-time police can be an abusive thing. Is that correct? And that's what Tim's way of doing it is, right?
I'd like to have those concerns.
Yeah. Jeff, I don't know, were you pushing on that one hard? I can't remember. We had, this was months ago we did it.
You know, it all depends on our recruitment process. I was pushing on it hard when we were at an all-time well, and we needed to move on it. And we needed to fill some slots and hire some individuals. We're kind of all pretty much up to staff now. It's not something I'm pushing real hard, but it does streamline the process.
The original ordinance said that mayor shall appoint hard-time police officers. We had a problem with that, too. It's not a political point. We're policemen, not political. So we changed it to the chief. But now, the attorney, and it's a good point saying, should it be the chief who did consent to the board? Which is what we've been doing in the past. We've called in closed session, presented candidates, tell them, this is my choice, and then we give the knock. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I would prefer we continue to do that, just so we know who these candidates are. We will discuss that.
I thought that was the purpose of it, so the board members knew who the candidates were, that they even come to the meeting, you know? I thought that used to be a requirement, kind of, but we've kind of gotten away from it because, like you said, you were short. But you used to always have them come in and be introduced to the board.
It's a big policy departure. The board hires, and that's why I brought that up, not because of an issue of chief, but just it's a departure from the policy. But if you want to best that policy, chief, that's fine, just want to make sure there's new that that's policy.
I honestly believe with the size of the community that we have, that all hires should consent. But you can't do that when you have sixty thousand people. But the amount of turnover that we have, and the size of the community we have, there's no reason why you can't come to a board meeting, ask for an executive session, and present the candidates to the board and say, this is the one I want. For any position, whether it be police, public works, doesn't matter. That's the way I feel, but you guys... That's what we've always done.
It's hard to answer a resident once in a while when they ask you about a certain officer.
You don't even know they were hired.
Huh?
You don't even know they were hired.
Don't even know they were hired or who they are, you know?
And that's why I brought that up.
Yeah, no, no.
That's a departure from the past policy.
Yeah.
I think it's got to change off the mayor. I don't think the mayor should be one of them. Hard-time police, but police chief who did consent to the board, we change the ordinance to read that. You don't have a problem with that, do you, Jeff?
No.
All right. That's it. And we're not voting on this tonight, but in February, we'll make that one change. Any other changes or comments, please see me, send me an email, call me on the phone. We'll ask the attorney the questions or comments on the revised one.
That it?
Yeah, public works and police department reports will be provided. That's it.
Okay, public safety?
Yeah, police department monthly report for December, and it goes for your review. Update on use of Suburban provided by Fire District. Chief, how are we doing with that?
Like I said, I reported in the last month's meeting, Beecher Fire Protection District donated that nineteen ninety-nine Chevy Suburban to our department. Now, a list of equipment to outfit it with, it's going to be about forty-three hundred dollars. So several estimates to have the vehicle painted, because it's wrecked right now. And Goldie's Auto Body has decided that they are going to paint it and donate the paint job, so it's not going to cost us anything to have it painted. Right now, that's where it is. It's at Goldie's. It's being painted. When it's done from there, we'll go off to Minor Electronics to be outfitted.
Okay, thank you, chief. Animal control annual report has been provided by the Beecher Vet Clinic and is enclosed. This year, fifteen dogs, twelve cats, and five other critters brought in from village residents and the police department were handled by the clinic. Anything on this, chief?
If you remember, last year, it was a sizable bill. There was an inordinate amount of cats and dogs that were brought in. And I worked with Dr. Dan and his staff, and they have streamlined their process, where they actually have a form that they fill out whenever an animal is brought in. Who's bringing the animal in, where it was found? So it kind of differentiates, is it from the village, or is it from Kankakee County, or where does animal come from? So I think that's helped kind of narrow down the scope of what we're charged for. And I bet that system is working well.
Good.
As does the master plan is currently being reviewed for an update. This plan was last updated in two thousand nine. Anything on that, chief, or?
I can do that one. How's Dan's personnel manual done with the cat, that piece?
I see. Okay. For the community, community security update. Since the tragic incident at Sandy Hook, the police department and the school district have accelerated their ongoing training and security measures. Procedures reviewed and are working cooperatively to ensure that the learning environment is as safe as it can be for Beecher children. Meetings have been held from the highest levels of local government to the frontline personnel in the last thirty days. Due to the nature of this matter, there is limited information that can be shared with the general public regarding procedures and training. Chief, anything on that?
No, just, I mean, it's something that we continually do every year. It's not that we have ever let anything lapse. The important thing when it comes to the community security is that the school of district, the personnel, their emergency response plan, our emergency response plan, I mean, they go hand in hand. And it's something we meet with them, I think it's a requirement with them, that annually we do need to go over these plans, and that's done, I think, in August of every year. Any agency from attending those meetings, we're pretty much together on a lot of issues.
Yeah. I see a lot of cooperation between the school district and the police department, which is a wonderful thing. Any other comments, chief?
Don't trust all of you.
If not, any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
Streets and alleys?
We're to consider a proposal to conduct a twenty thirteen road repair and resurfacing program. The committee met, discussed the program for twenty thirteen, and the details of their recommendations are contained in this report. One of the components of the plan is to incorporate the repairs to the Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge approaches to achieve a better economies of scale and use MGM escrow funds to pay off this portion of the budget. It's also being recommended that the outstanding one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars on the two thousand six MFT loan, since the interest rate is four point two three. If the board agrees, then we need to take the following action and motions that are after. Basically, it was a four-hour meeting, which included several other things besides this particular program. We thought it wise that since we had the road resurfacing program by H&R Green, that they would continue that program. And then since H&R Green was already out here and doing the roads, that we would combine the Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge in with it. We kicked around for quite some time what streets to do, how to do it, the pros and cons of doing those streets, and we finally came up with a recommendation, which was Through calculations and recalculations, we've determined that maybe we've underestimated revenue and we overestimated maybe expenses that it could possibly happen. But as Trustee Caporos has always indicated, it seems like that these bids, when they go out, are coming in much lower. So we're going to gamble and go out for bid and see where they lie and come back. And if, in fact, we are over the amount that we have, then the streets that were involved would be under consideration for cutting, for lack of better terms, or at that particular point in time, we certainly can explore other options. The streets that we did pick are so much in, somewhat in accordance with the plan that was submitted by H&R Green, not to mention that, because we are going to pay off debt this year. Any questions? Go ahead.
We just have a couple other options to build into. We estimated all these revenues that we would have in place on May first, and I always thought, well, if we didn't get the bill for the traffic light, we could use that thirty-eight short term. Now the bill came and I have three, but you could borrow off of other forms for your short-term, like the general, you want to do project, and infrastructure pay it back, because you are getting about eleven thousand a month in the infrastructure account. I would not recommend borrowing from a bank, I mean, you're just paying off a loan, which you have in the bank now, but you could short-term borrow off of your account.
We've sort of frowned upon that in the past, too, so...
But we'll make that decision when we get...
When the time comes, correct?
So there's a difference of ten grand. What do you do?
We can consider that when it comes down to it. Any other questions or comments?
This nineteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine, that doesn't include engineering, right? Number two?
That was the engineering, correct?
That's just the engineering. Then what is it the cost to replace the, or repair the bridges?
We don't know yet.
We don't know. It's got to be engineered and go off to business.
Basically, we, if you remember right, we proposed the bridge a year ago, and at that particular point in time, we made a recommendation to have an engineer take a look at it and proceed. At that particular point in time, the board decided not to, without getting into labor. At this particular point in time, we decided to use H&R Green, like I said, because of the streets. And they're going to do it, they're going to basically follow it through from the beginning to the end at that price, and that includes the streets as well. So we're combining two projects to get a better bang for the buck. And if I remember right, was it like fifteen thousand just for the bridge alone, if I remember right?
They were anywhere from like five thousand up to like twenty thousand.
But H&R Green, I think, was fifteen, so...
Twelve-two.
Okay, twelve-two, so I figured then, for that amount of money, he's also building streets.
No, a couple of things to, like what Gail had said, that does include, Gail, that all the, you know, the inspection and documentation, how we had said that this bridge wasn't registered and stuff like that, that's all covered in there. And then the other thing is, like Greg had said, you know, my thinking on, which we put into deep consideration while we're presenting this now, was the fact that along with doing sewer and water mains, right, with, an ideal time is the winter to try to, you know, capitalize on companies trying to keep their guys busy. At the same time, with, as you look at the layout here, when we're looking to do things, and Greg has them in here, you know, February fifth and a March opening, is we want to try to capture that, the opening of those plants, and be able to, you know, have these guys fighting over who's going to get the first jobs coming out of the plants and everything else to, for that work. I think it's an opportune time where we're going to see some lower bids than usually what's anticipated. Versus waiting until July, where we maybe have a couple more months of infrastructure funds sitting there, you know, where you're going to be capturing higher costs, where you could be looking at higher oil prices in the middle of summer and everybody busy and...
Just the Cardinal Creek Boulevard engineering that would be taken out of the escrow account.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'd like a motion approving the road replacement program for twenty thirteen based on the findings of the twenty twelve H&R Green Street Resurfacing Priority Ranking Report and repairs to the Cardinal Creek Boulevard using MGM escrow accounts only for the Cardinal Creek Boulevard repair.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? None, roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caporos?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Also, I'd like to make a motion approving a proposal from H&R Green to conduct Phase Two and Three engineering for both the bridge and the twenty thirteen road resurfacing program in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the proposal from H&R Green for Phase Two and Three Engineering Discussion. None, roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Caporos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to let bids on February fifth, twenty thirteen, for a March fourth, twenty thirteen bid opening and March eleventh, twenty thirteen bid award.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for letting bids for the MFT projects, or rather, for the road projects and not MFT, so... Any discussion? None, roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Caporos? I mean, sorry, Coleman?
Yes.
Caporos?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion authorizing the village treasurer to pay off the two thousand six MFT loan on May first, twenty thirteen, using ninety-five thousand dollars in MFT funds and seventy-eight thousand dollars in the infrastructure account.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to authorize the treasurer to pay off the MFT loan. And is the total ninety-five thousand, right, Bob? I'm a little confused. You've got here a motion using ninety-five thousand MFT funds.
And seventy-eight in infrastructure. The loan's a hundred seventy-two.
Oh, okay. I didn't think you split that high, but, okay, all right, okay. I was just confused on the numbers, because I just crossed it off today, so...
It's a hundred seventy-two. I know it's a hundred seventy-two. Actually, it's about a hundred seventy-two. It's a hundred seventy-two on April third, it'll be a hundred seventy-two.
I checked it off, okay. With that, roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Caporos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
And on item number two, consider a motion on...
We have one more motion.
I'm sorry, did I miss that one? A motion authorizing the drafting of MFT resolutions in order to complete this plan. Make motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the MFT resolutions. With that, roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caporos?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sure, we're done. Okay. All right, now we're to consider a motion authorizing the approval of a bid for the joint purchase of fuel by the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee through February twenty fourteen at a price of three dollars and three oh two cents per gallon for unleaded and three dollars six, three point six eight seven per gallon for diesel with additives. The bid opening was held on January fourth. Bids were advertised and four direct solicitations were bailed. Four identified vendors located in the South Suburban in Kankakee Yellow Pages. Only one bid was received from Heritage Gilman FS, although these prices are higher than the current low rack price. Price fluctuations are hedged for the next thirteen months, and fourteen thousand gallons of unused diesel will also be provided at twenty twelve hundred bid price. Last year, the Fuel Committee saved an average of three point zero three cents per gallon over a low racking price over the twelve-month period, or about two thousand three hundred fourteen dollars. Committee also saved about one thousand five hundred nine dollars by paying the invoices with ten days of receipt. The Fuel Committee voted unanimously to recommend award of its bid. In our packet, there was information that was provided to us that when the bid came in, the first thing he would say, I sort of got shell-shocked by the price. It didn't seem as low as it could be. Then when you look at the information that was provided, it basically fluctuates, goes up and down, and eventually it averages out as a savings. In fact, I think the very next day, we heard on the news report that the gas is supposed to go up like four hours again this summer, so, which then would be a saving. So that's what I mean by just going up and down, the information was provided to us. Any questions?
Yeah, I had the same question, you know? That seems pretty high. I mean, that's higher than what you could pay at the pump, and the pump includes a lot of taxes that we don't pay.
Yeah, we...
I mean, at right now, you could walk, you go to either station right in Beech, or it's three twenty-eight a gallon. And like I said, that includes a lot of state taxes and such that we don't pay.
If you look at this document...
Yeah, yeah.
It showed the up and down, and like I say, it, I shell-shocked right off the bat, is what I, you know, I agree with you, but then in the long term, it does average out to be a savings.
It ended up being a savings based on the unleaded, correct?
In both cases?
No. Diesel, there was a cost.
That's the case? Okay, I cross Stan Burke.
You're playing the market.
Yeah.
If you feel there's going to be no terrorist activity, if you feel no pipeline's going to blow up, then I would play low rack pricing. But for a government agency, it's nice to have guaranteed pricing.
A lot easier for the budget.
Yeah, and I don't want to play the market, take that risk. I'd longer pay three billion for your budget, and that's it. At the end of the year, we'll have to look at it. So far, we haven't been burned by it.
Three years.
And that's what the Fuel Committee was thinking when it...
Last year, we kind of got burned.
At the end, yes. And it fluctuates throughout the year, so...
Yeah. I guess my other question would be is, did the Fuel Committee discuss at all possibly rebidding, re-letting it for bid?
That didn't come up, why? Why would we rebid?
Well, you just, another option for them to come back. It's generally done in construction. A lot of times, somebody will let something for bid, and you don't like anything you get, you refuse all, and you can rebid it no longer.
Well, off the top of my head...
Especially with the price right now. I mean, right out the gate, we're going to be paying a lot more than what it is right now. I mean, we could be buying it at a cheaper price off the rack pricing and wait another month or... I'm just asking if that was discussed.
No, I, off the top of my head, without really thinking about it...
Actually, he thought we probably missed the lowest time bid, which was in December. Right now, it's rising.
Yeah, that was discussed, as far as bidding, going over something like this a month earlier than what we have been, to get a better price. So he says we were a month late. But going back to the, you know, the option that you're talking about, I guess what I'm thinking is, number one, there was only bid, so I don't know what we would gain. And is that really fair to other bidders, that if you let out of the bag what the price was, well, now I know I can beat it, so now I can rebid again? So in other words, you give it your best shot right off the bat.
Yeah.
And if you throw it out, then to me, that's not fair for the people who have or have not bid. It's just not a fair process if you do it that way.
Well, now that we've discussed it like this, that's, yeah.
Well, even then, it would've been public record, right? After that day.
Yeah, he'd bid in two ways. He could either take fourteen cents over low rack, which is one of the delivery prices, a lot of pricing through the year. The Fuel Committee decided to lock the prices through the year. He makes 14 cents a gallon where there's low rack, where you lock the prices on that.
Something else, that this price also includes the additives. The pumps would not have the additives in it, correct? Like the, the diesel additives?
Yeah, he had some, he had some of that for low, high chemical, for cold weather.
Yeah.
For, for machines that don't run very often.
Right.
Uppercity fluid or something.
And if you buy it off-
Yeah, that, that's more for, that's more for equipment that's not necessarily ours. You know, our trucks are diesel, they're gonna run right off of those. It's the same as any other truck that-
But last year, you said you had it.
It's more heavy equipment, but I'm just asking a question.
Okay.
Like I said, like you said, it was kind of shocking to see that. As it being higher than I see it at the pump, and knowing there's all kinds of taxes at the pump that we don't pay.
Yeah, which question that day? Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid, joint purchasing fuel for the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee for February 2014 at a price of $3.302 per gallon for unleaded and $3.687 per gallon for diesel with additives.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the joint fuel bid. Any discussion or questions? None, roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Caperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
And then, the last item that we discussed that day is a basically a recap of what we've done the last year. The Treasurer reports in the minutes from the four meetings where 2012 were enclosed for our review. In 2012, we replaced the pumps in the computer system which runs the fuel system so that each entity using the fuel system can access their records online. A new key card system was also being used. The cost of the system was about $27,000 and paid from the funds collected from a surcharge of eight cents per gallon since they collected it since 1994. Since this equipment lasted so long, inspected to last as long, we decided to lower the surcharge down to six cents per gallon rather than eight cents per gallon. I asked if it could go even lower, but there was concerns on shrinkage, which maybe you can help explain that.
There is evaporation that occurs in tanks. It's hard to even handle how much that is, but when I did my audit, the amount of fuel we needed to tank, three levels of amount of fuel we spent. The reason for the surcharge is we want to accumulate funds in our accounts, so we have capital purchases made. We have the money in the account, we don't have to go ask the entities to cough up funds, to replace tanks, whatever. So, now we have to start all over again and start replacing that money that we just spent, this $27,000, so in 15 years, it's better again for the next pump. It's just smart. We laid a concrete pad out there. Originally, it was stone, and we had problems with fuel spillage. And we recommended we lay this cement pad, and we named fuel spillage, and put a pad out there. Plus, certain individuals that wore uniforms, they might get shoes there, even if they were developed for vehicles.
Call it work.
Fire people. So, we took care of that for them. There's things that we do for them that, that we use that capital money for. Now, next year, if we are still generating sufficient rigging cutting methods, we'll just keep cutting. It used to be four, it was about a little, we ever had it.
Basically, a surcharge paid for the new equipment without having to go back to taxing bodies and asking them for any more money?
Correct.
What's your formula if somebody decides to, to navigate away from the fuel system commission? And you've got this reserve here, are they entitled to a certain percentage of it?
Absolutely not.
They paid into it?
If the, if the account is depleted, society-
No, no. I'm just saying, one of the bodies decides, I don't wanna buy my-
If the elderly decide they're not entitled, then yeah.
They're not entitled to it.
At the same time, we have just bought fuel for all those entities for 12 months. So, if they walk-
I'm just saying, next year, next year, when the contract's up, you don't have five bodies there, you only got four. Are they entitled to some of that money?
No. I don't think our bylaws allow for a payoff. Because nobody technically paid it.
They did.
Well, the volume of vendors wanted it, they just took it.
Which one, you talk about the S from right?
Okay, no questions.
Can I go back to the streets a minute? The committee meeting that we had, there was Penfield Street flooding item, that was item number D, which was included in our packet. The last sentence, a swell could be cut through the berm along Gold Street. Just, that's also broke Gold Street, just so everybody understands that. There's a berm there that was put there that we think is damming the water there. We would cut through that, but then also there'd be a slight swell along Penfield to channel the water down that way. Just to be in addition to those minutes of those meetings. Following that? Just during that.
Sewer water?
Water Department monthly report for November and December is enclosed for your review, along with the Sewer Department monthly report for December. Water billing registers for the months of November and December is enclosed for your review. Is there any questions on any of those? Water billing register and pumping report for 2012 is enclosed for your review, although our gallons billed did go up a little bit in 2012, the amount pumped was significantly higher. When looking, when looking over the trends, it is entirely possible that we have a hidden leak in the system. Leak detection of the village's mains installed prior to 1995 would let us know if this is the case. In 1994, we found a large leak and cut our water costs, or our water loss by 30%. Staff does not believe that there is a large smoking gun out there, but there may be smaller leaks contributing to about 10% of our water loss. I've discussed this with, with Buddy a lot, Buddy, if you wanna-
Hey, you know what Bob and I always fight about this to begin with, but I do want you to beware, like I said, 2013 was a rough year for us. I was just going through the annual reports, and we had over 21 water main breaks. I flushed over 1,200 hydrants. That, that's almost 6 million, a little over 6 millions gallons of water, just on the hydrant flushing alone. And you can add up with the water main breaks, so like I said, we kind of sit there and don't always agree with the numbers. But when you get my annual report, you're gonna see that, and things happened to us this year, and a lot of direct result was the gas, what it happened around the 4th of July. I mean, water patterns changed, we had to manipulate a lot of things. It could've been worse, but I was not sure to say, you know, if you do the math, you do the numbers. We're not as bad off as it seems to be. Now, I agree, the leak detection, we did find a substantial amount of leaks. We've been repairing leaks. Going into December, we had three, or 2,000 we had to replace, plus a service line, and we had a water main break over on Elm Street. You know, very unusual place to even handle that. So, I hope that kind of eases a little bit of the pain there, but that's, that's the best explanation I can give you guys.
Now, me and you went driving around the other day and looked at a bunch, I mean, there was a few.
Well, there's-
We still have some money in the budget, but we could do some more leak detection this year.
Right, we are going to, there's questionable places. But I, I think the thing is, I mean, you don't really realize just how much water gets purged out of there. Good example was one we read well five the other day, and what was in there, within 30 minutes, we pumped up over-
15 minutes, 25,000. 15 minutes, 25,000.
Yeah, so it's, you know, and that was, you know, not with head pressure, there's only one pump at 500 GPM. So, if you imagine two of them going, adjusting for pressure, we're throwing out a minimum of 12 to 1800 gallons per minute, so.
Just one comment.
Kind of a response time.
One that also, when we went through Title 12, we're gonna ask the fire department to submit a monthly report on an estimate of the amount of unmetored water that they think they use.
Because we did have that in fire.
The fire out there, I don't know how many tankers they took, but I mean, it's, it's a lot of water. Just an estimate, we're not holding to it, but, you know, we got a lot of unmetored water.
Not a direct, yeah, but little things like that, a point here, a point there, and that percentage of loss really makes a difference in how it looks when you look at it on a report. And then, the only other thing I would, I, I think we need to do while we're talking about leak detection, and, you know, this'll come up at budget time and that, but I think we really need to concentrate on the areas that we're gonna be looking at redoing these roads. And, and I think we should be doing leak detection on all that before we pave roads where we could possibly have service lines running underneath these roads and stuff like that. Make sure we're all proper and tight in those areas if we're gonna be spending these monies fixing these roads over that stuff. I know, I know we, we went through, and we drove a lot of those roads, Buddy and I did. And I mean, the majority of it's in the parkway, but we still got service lines and stuff like that running underneath the roads, so.
Right, if I'm not mistaken, there's still money there, and we could, I guarantee you, I can reassure you that I believe we can accommodate that area of the roads for leak detection.
Yeah, I think that should be, I think that should be priority. We're addressing mains that are definitely older than 1995, and at the same time, ensuring what we're gonna, you know, our investment, that we're not, you know, don't have anything bad going on.
What example is metal in the town of Orchard? Yes, that's a good example. We just paved that road two years ago, and there's a nice threshold right in there. Was that a hole leak? What was leaking?
Well, that one, oh yeah, we did do that. Yeah, no, that was, actually was a radio crack, but yeah, I don't, we don't ever had any.
We had leak detection, we paved the road, maybe we could fix it at any time. There's no guarantee with that. Not cutting you a deal.
But that, that's, yeah, that's definitely an area we need to address.
Well, we even had your leak detection come out for that because of where, where it was at and the storm. And you sure were pretty good about figuring out pretty close to where it was at, and that one was, that was important.
Jonathan, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
This is for Buddy. How many water meters have you replaced so far?
I'd have to get back, the difference in this year, we replaced instead of smaller meters, which is what we had originally started out doing. We spent most of our money replacing 2-inch meters, which cost a lot more money, so a large percentage of that money's went to those alone, to keep us within our budget. I'll give you, you'll have a total amount for the annual report.
Okay.
In 2011, we did over 100 residential meters. You know, we found out that our water meter didn't go up that much, so the meters we did replace didn't really pay for themselves, but when we found out that these larger meters are really spinning slow, we replaced those before we even started building, usage development. So, we've attacked the bigger meters this year, to get some consideration for the turn, and we are residential.
So, you're still doing it, though?
Oh, yes.
Was there any other questions on any of the registers or reports? Maxwell Street Water Main update. Pre-con meeting has been scheduled for January 18th, with more commencing the week of January 21st, and lasting about 30 days. Restoration will then be completed by May 15th. The letter will be provided to the residents along the street. Once the pre-con is held, and we have the dates for the construction become more complete.
Since I did that, the engineer colleagues are in John, Jonathan, they give pretty good dates and all the letters. Because they wanna start the job Monday.
Yeah.
I don't wanna wait till after pre-con to get the letter, I can start the job, so you know what I'm doing. Monday, the 2nd Thursday, that's when they start.
Yeah, this Monday.
I think they're gonna start on our own. I'll leave that. Is this gonna be here for us?
Yes, it is.
Ah, that's my hello.
No, 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 that's my birthday.
All right.
There, Mayor. Okay.
And now, we have, on the, consider adding to the agenda the Village Board workshop a discussion on the future of the waste water plant operations in light of the situation. I think we should propose a close, a closed session to discuss it.
You really can't discuss the position in closed session, you can only discuss-
What?
What we received. Yeah, yeah. We can't discuss replacing that position, no.
Not this time.
You can't really, just, you can't go in closed session to discuss a position, only the salary of a certain person that negotiated it.
So, something like that, we don't discuss in closed session?
No, you're only supposed to go in closed session. The latter, you can, I mean, it doesn't really say anything. If it's something you wanna do in closed session.
Doesn't matter to me.
The latter is what it is.
Okay.
If I can make a recommendation, though, in the paragraph, I don't think the issues should be discussed. Open the open.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah?
Absolutely not. All right, so then, consider adding to the agenda the Village Board workshop a discussion on the future of the waste water plant operations.
Operator.
Operations and operator.
What, and I'll ask you, what we can say is, if the mayor decides not to come back, we are looking at a contractual operational alternative, suppose we hire another full-time employee, and that's what we want to do in the workshop, if we can do it on the board. And that, that's the purpose of it.
So, does that need to be in form of a motion, or will the mayor just add it to the workshop, or to the agenda of the workshop?
It'll be on the agenda of the workshop.
Okay. If there's no other questions, that concludes my report.
Okay. Coupley buildings, properties, parks?
Okay, Fire District Building update, have not heard a word. Have you heard anything, Bob? Okay. Our Cancer Memorial update, we had a meeting last Thursday, and we have a sneak peek at what the monument is going to look like. Of course, this is just the initial drawing, and it's for your, just so you know what I'm talking about. We formally came up with the name. The name is Ribbon of Hope. It's a cancer awareness garden, what it's going to be named. And, you know, we, we discussed it, and, you know, somebody wanted a park. And it can't be a park because it's already in a park, so we decided to go with a garden. This monument is going to be about 14 feet, the ribbon's gonna be about 14 feet high. It's gonna be about 35 feet wide. There's gonna be flowers, paper, bricks, benches. And basically, what we're doing is, we went over this design, we added some things. There was a little kiosk there that we wanted to put in, and we, we ended up taking that off, that's on the drawing right now, but there's gonna be changes to this, but I just wanted you guys to see this. This isn't gonna be published or anything like that, but this is the start. This is our second meeting that we had last Thursday. Once we get the design and all of the plans, what we can do is go out and get bids to see how much this is going to cost. Again, we are starting with $0, and once we get it finalized, we can go out and try to get some corporate sponsors and some, you know, sponsorship from individuals and so on. So, that's what we're gonna do, is do a lot of fundraising. We're also talking about having a corporate sponsor board similar to what we had at the Veterans Memorial. I think everybody knows where this is going to be in the location, but, you know, this is kind of a sneak peek at what we're looking at.
Scott, will they be selling bricks like they did at the memorial for, or around this, where, like the little walking cans?
Yes, yeah, they'll be paper bricks for people to purchase, similar to what the Veterans Memorial is. It seems like the Cancer Memorial, it seems like it has touched every family. And, you know, what we wanna do is make it special, we wanna make it, you know, of course, there's, there's survivors. There's people that have, are no longer with us, so there's, there's a lot of memories and, and so forth. So, this is what we're doing with the Ribbon of Hope, and I think it's gonna be a great, I know we're excited about it, and we wanna make it a reality. Any questions? Okay. But that's what we're up to. Our next meeting is going to be January 31st here at the Township Center. Excuse me, one second. Yes, will there be lighting around this memorial? There's going to be internal lighting in the, you know, in the base of the ribbon. There's going to be recessed lighting right in the top of it, so it's gonna shine up from there. So, it's just gonna go up, up in the air. But as far as any other type of lighting, streetlights or, or anything like that, there's not, nothing planned at this point. No vandalism concerns? There is, and, and that's one thing that we're, we're looking at, making the ribbon tall enough where, where we can't get any type of things like that. You're always open for vandalism. You know, I don't care what you do, what you, what you try to do to stop it, but, you know, we're hoping that, you know, there's, there's people that are not gonna vandalize it. Any other questions? But this is the first, you know, first look, and we got, we have a few things we're gonna tweak. So, I'll bring that to you, our update at the next meeting. Update on installation of two park benches by the family of Brian Jones. Bobby Jones came, and we, we went out to Fireman's Park. We picked out locations of the, the benches. There's gonna be two benches, they're gonna be six feet in length, and they're very nice benches. I've seen pictures of these benches, they're put in, in, they're up at the Heritage Park in Crete. And they're done with recycled material. One thing I wanted to ask the board is, we have an option to go with handles or without. And, you know, we're talking about going either way, and I don't know what you guys' opinion is. One thought about the handles is it might stop people from maybe skateboarding down the, down the bench and so forth. So, that was one reason what, what I was thinking about.
I agree. Would these be-
Arm, armrests, I'm sorry.
Would these be engraved?
They're gonna have, they have a small plate on the top board, you know. There's some little bit of saying and, and Brian's name and so forth, so. They're gonna go, one's gonna go at Fireman's 2, and it's gonna go on the third baseline. There's a perfect location for it, the concrete pad is already there, so we can anchor that bench there. And then, there's another location over by Fireman's 1, which is right between the, this is right behind the third baseline, between the dugout and the benches, what do you, what do you call it?
Bleachers.
Bleachers, right between those. So, of course, I think we'd have to put some type of concrete in there because it's asphalt for an anchor, but that's where, that's where we're looking to put them. There's also been talk about a donation of marking the fields, like Fireman's 1, Fireman's 2, Fireman's 3, maybe a sign, a very nice sign- Fireman's Two, Fireman's Three, maybe a sign, a very nice sign for like the backstop, so people know exactly, you know, if they have practice or if they have a game, and their game is at Fireman's Three, they, they can look and see that, you know, that's the location. I know a lot of times, if you haven't ever been involved in sports, especially in softball and baseball, practice, you know, there's, there's teams all over the place, and there's, grandparents and parents looking, you know, for the location, so we're looking into that as well.
Is that a donation, or is this?
That's going to be a donation as well.
Donation.
So we're, that's not in concrete yet, but it's just some talk right now. So I think that would, would help as well. Any questions about the benches?
Over, so pick them up and install them.
Yeah, she's going to pay for them, order them, and then we'll pick them up and install them. Okay. The next item is Village Parks assigned addresses. This is in regards to 911. If there's an emergency or a call that comes in to 911 or to the police department, the people at the field, they're going to have a sign there stating the location and everything else, so instead of saying we're in Fireman's Park, or we're in, you know, wherever, the fire and police are going to know exactly where they're located when they make that call. So that was a request made by, was it 911?
No, it was.
Yeah. So that's what we're doing too. We haven't had that many incidences, but you never know, and we want to be able to get there as quickly as we can. The list that was in the board packets did not have Walton Stat Park on it, so we will add that and add address, add, and address to that as well.
Separate from the junior high.
Separate from the junior high. Any, any questions or comments? That ends my report.
Okay. Want to end building and zoning?
A special Village Board meeting to discuss amendment of the zoning ordinance pertaining to digital sign is scheduled for Monday, January 28th at 7:00 here at the Township Center. The PCC will also be invited, and the village attorney is also being asked to attend to provide legal guidance as, as we draft our amendments. This meeting will be in lieu of our regular PCC meeting, which is scheduled for January 24th. The packets will be mailed out at the end of the week. The Building Department monthly report and code enforcement monthly report were closed for your review. There was also the Building Department annual report for 2012, along with the code enforcement annual report for 2012. Those were also enclosed. That ends my report.
Okay. My report, intergovernmental meeting rescheduled for Wednesday, January 30th at 7:00 p.m. here at the Township Center. Again, the school is, is going to give a presentation on their curriculum supposedly, and any other items, I think we'll just have it on the table. If anybody wants to bring anything up, he brings things up. We might have more information on the 30th, because we are, have a meeting on the Olean Expressway on the 28th at 10:30, 11:30, 10:30 here. Talking about intersections and, and things of that nature, and the crossroads and everything else, so maybe we'll have some more information on.
It's understanding there being each over taxi body for an hour in this area, so we had 10:30, 11:30, county could be, so they're meeting with each.
So we'll all have comments on this, and.
When is that? The 30th?
The 30th is the intergovernmental. Ida has asked to have a meeting with Bob and myself, and I think school superintendent, right?
Well, she's got an hour. They have a different hour.
Oh, they got, yeah, I understand, but they all have time slots, right.
Township's 11:30 to 12:30, Fire District's 13:30, 10:30, but they're meeting with each over taxi body for an hour to discuss interchange and road closures. I think that's a direct result of the fact that we met with them on our intergovernmental basis.
So we'll have some input at that intergovernmental meeting also on.
Each taxi body should present their findings.
Right, right, right. Bob and I did attend the EastCom Board of Directors meeting. There were a lot of discussion, arguments, whatever you want to call it. We came up with a formula on the way dispatching fees. We have a base figure, plus all the communities have a, are being billed 50% by population and 50% by number of calls. We, we kind of considered that was probably the best, best scenario. One gentleman wanted to bill according to the amount of officers and all kinds of ridiculous scenarios, so, but that's what we came up with. And we also have reduced the insurance rates also. What's his name? Dave Wallace wanted to that, and they were going to save insurance costs for dispatch center. Refused contract negotiations. We did get another proposal today, and we are meeting this week, I believe.
Thursday.
Thursday, so we will have more updates on, on our negotiations. South Suburban Airport, I don't know if you're aware, but the state has bought approximately 200 more acres. 80 acres, I thought, would never be sold, but the gentleman decided to sell anyhow. Never, never would have ever thought it would have sold, but he has sold that. 120, I don't know exactly where that parcel is at, but, but they are still pursuing property, so. And again, the Olean Expressway, like I said, we're having a meeting 30th, 28th. We have completed our code review. Bud, Bob, and myself went through Title 12 last week, and hopefully we'll have that done by May, I would, I hope so too. And also, I would like to point, Tim Guer is our negotiation, legal counsel for our union negotiations. Teamsters has requested negotiation, beginning negotiations on our contract, upcoming contract, so Tim Guer's our legal counsel, represented us last year, or three years ago, four years ago, and I'd like to appoint him now to be our negotiator again. Jeff, you're pleased with him, right?
He does a wonderful job.
Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to motion to approve that appointment.
Second.
Any discussion on the appointment? Not, we'll call.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Greg.
Okay, thank you. Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Ceparos?
Yes.
Domansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, you have any other business?
No, I just want to make sure, Jonathan, you want to hold the second session?
That's why I was just asking, Jeanette, you need to hold one to accept this.
No. You don't, you don't have to accept this. I was going to say, Fireman's, you know, you. Bob, do you want to discuss how we got to that point?
Has everybody got a copy of it? Has everybody got a copy of it?
Yeah, we can, we can do that quickly. I'm requesting the second second.
The discussed personnel?
To discuss the resident.
Yeah, residents. Okay. You have anything about her?
No, I got nothing.
Okay. So you're asking?
Yeah, discuss the, discuss the retirement of.
Okay, session, discuss retirement.
They're a motion.
Yeah. Motion made in the second. We'll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Domansky?
Yes.
Ceparos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Okay. All done.